To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any public comment on agenda items? And with none, we will move on to our consensus items.
I don't have many comments on this one. We did have an update on retirement, just someone who wanted to move their date forward, and I want that person to know our thoughts are certainly with her. And we do have one out of state, and I believe overnight field trip with rifle team going to nationals, both which require you votes to approve the field trip.
Okay. Any questions or comments or motion to approve? Motion by Joel, is there a second? Second by Darlene. Motion by Joel, seconded by Darlene to approve the consensus item as presented. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero. Next up, so you have a program update right now. I'm not missing anything. You have a program update. And maybe none of you got. So we are to all business.
So you had another round of board policies, which I did not give you. New ones was catalogued.
This seems thicker though than last month's.
I'm not going to spend tons of time going through them. So the first group that I'd like us to look at were some of the bylaws that were just consent agenda and executive session. Again, the first one just allows us to make technical corrections of policies without having to go through consensus items. And 0167.2 just makes a few more allowances for which executive session may be allowed. And that's basically, if you want to consider them kind of in clumps like that, that might be the best way since there's so many.
You can do it as a lump or you can do it.
If you have any, I guess I can say if you have any questions or comments on any of them, there were a couple that we had to, I think you had to make some decisions on choices. Let me see. Which I don't think the bullying one, 551701, I don't believe that had any choices that you had to make. The rescinded policies again are just because those have been absorbed by another policy or legislation has changed to remove the requirement for a C. I would say we can, if you want to vote them off in a clump, we can consider some E1A through E1C because there's nothing that you have to make any separate determinations for any of those in.
So if, are there any questions or comments on those, or do we want to make a motion to approve E1A through C as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Wiley, seconded by Dave to approve the policies listed under E1A through C. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero.
Okay. In section D, we had a few policies to consider. One was 2131, educational outcomes for students. This had absorbed one of the rescinded policies, but also it's just changed so much that basically the whole thing was scrapped and rewritten. And not sure the whole purpose of it because it's not specific to curriculum. It just gives a bunch of different categories that curriculum can fall under, for example, communication and collaboration, general education, pride and ethics, cooperation, citizenship, arts, health, career planning, all the different elements that curricula in K-12 could address. So that one, I don't think really had anything that was needing discussion. 2623, student assessment, again, this one changed to remove some of the old assessments like I-Step and replace them with I-Read. And a lot of it had to do, a lot of the changes had to do with the new requirements around I-Read with the mandatory retention in third grade if a good cause exemption is not met, how you appeal that process. I did, there was a choice in there that the board can either choose to hear appeals on retention for I-Read or not hear appeals. I suggested not simply for the reason you had not been part of that child's, I guess, looking at all their data all along and really knowing what was going on. And I would say the building level principal and instructional coaches and classroom teacher or myself and Tiffany would be part of a lot of that deliberation, but that's your choice. So you do need to make a decision on what your choice is in that particular policy as to which preference you have.
Yeah, I would agree with what you said there. You folks have firsthand information, data to make that decision. We've got to trust that.
What other thoughts or opinions are there on that?
I don't want to be involved in that.
It's a hard conversation. It sure is. For parents and for school.
And I'm sure you have conversations leading up to that soon.
Many, yeah.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. So I think we all agree that we wouldn't want to participate.
Okay. So when we get to that point, we'll just make sure to note that was the modification we wanted. Other one in that group is 5410. Again, this reflects just the new legislative changes and requirements for high school redesign, graduation requirements, more information about retention and I-Read, policies, procedures. 5460, again, more about graduation requirements under the high school redesign. Let's see. Must not have these in the order I put them in, so I apologize. Lot of it just basically lists what the law is and what options have to be in for those things. It's, we just pretty, it pretty much goes by what the legislation is. So I really didn't see anything that was too, too much of a challenge there. And then the final policy in that section is policy 2221. We added the legislative language about the teaching of human sexuality and what has to happen and what options have to be presented to parents and notification to parents about that, as well as the new requirements for students to receive courses on personal financial literacy and computer science before they graduate. Lot of these have to do with curriculum, basically, and assessment.
So are there any questions or comments or motion to approve? That would be the remainder of what's listed, right? Can I understand what you're saying correctly?
There is a section, I guess I didn't go through. There is a section E. Let me see. Let's just do that section because E has some more options.
D. Okay. So questions or comments or motion to approve IE, section D?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel. Motion by Dave, seconded by Joel to approve the policies listed under item I, one, D. All the, with, with the board choosing, with the board choosing to not participate in, my gosh, I forgot the word.
Retention appeals.
Thank you. Retention appeals. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero.
Okay, then we get to segment E. This one is about employment of the superintendent and adjunct teachers. 1220 just adds language about when you're hiring a superintendent and choosing the committee to work on that hiring or considering different candidates for the superintendency about avoiding nepotism and fraternization as much as policy would restrict. We had approved similar policy for all other staff employed a couple months ago when we were looking at that particular language for whether it's teachers, classified staff, I think even support staff and coaches. So this just applies to when you're selecting a superintendent. Also just talks about the types of options that you can look into when you're hiring a superintendent, whether you're using a search committee from a university, bringing in people from the community, having teachers on the committee, just gives you the options that you have. Let's see. I think on 3120.02, that was the adjunct teacher. Again, we just newly approved this, I think last summer, early fall. It just reflects some new hiring legislation about if there were anything that would require a personnel issue to have to go on the new business, which we've approved for other staff. I also recommended, well, you also have to discuss or consider whether you want this item of the hiring of adjunct staff to be discussable, a discussable item with the union. The reason this would be something that is, I guess you could say, in some places could be contentious because adjunct staff, by definition legislatively, are not allowed to be part of the bargaining unit. And so that means when it comes to hiring someone who's an adjunct, a district could hire them for far more than what other staff with similar experience or whatever we're going to receive, or flip the that is, they're not in the bargaining unit, hire them for far less than what someone with similar experience or qualifications may receive. Right now, we only have one adjunct staff and that person's probably not going to stay on that status very long. It was really a method to be a stopgap between someone who was on an emergency permit and trying to get their license and things like that, or their program finished. I don't see this being something we do a lot. Some schools do use it far more, I think, when they are really struggling with recruitment and things. So I understand why Indiana State Teachers Association had concerns about this being another option for hiring staff and getting them licensed, at least in their local district, to teach and be, be employed. I have, I think, a fairly transparent relationship with our teachers' union, NADA. I don't have any problem talking to them. I don't know that, there's really nothing that make as mandatorily as discussable. It would really just be at this point, a notification, probably, that we were talking about adjunct staff, which I would do anyway. And I don't know that I see myself hiring someone as adjunct if they were going to be in a true teaching situation and not want to follow what our master contract sort of could afford in any way. I just don't think that's.
I think notification is appropriate.
So that's it in E. So again, you would need to say whether you do want it to be discussable or negotiable with the union, or again, we can change it and say, provide notification. Letter F talks about legal settlement, equivalent instruction for compulsory attendance purpose, compliance purposes for non-accredited schools. So 5111, again, we just had some changes in law about proof of residency. It also talks about accepting transfer students, which this is just legislative. Again, this is kind of the open door thing in Indiana right now. 9270 is about our, now offering more of a virtual or hybrid option at our middle and high schools and basically allowing, for example, a homeschool student, if they at least take one class here, to participate in our extracurriculars, clubs, whatever, as long as they meet all other eligibility requirements with IHSA, for example, or whatever, to participate with one course instead of five. Right now, our current policy says they have to be here for at least five classes. So that's not really the homeschooling yet. And I think that's it. So really, the only thing that I think you need to make beside if there was, were any other commentary on any of the other policies, it just needs to be the, what type of communication with NADA we would want to have about adjunct staff is the only thing that needs to be clarified, I think, in that group.
So what's the feeling on that? Do we, for each person, do you want notification or do we want negotiation on adjunct?
Notification.
Notification.
Do I have a statement from this one?
Probably.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. So then for, let's see, so we're.
E and F.
E and F, thank you. I was like trying to do all of it at once. The letters aren't there, no. Is there any more questions or comments or motion to approve E1, E, and F with the change to be notification in the policy regarding adjunct teachers?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by Darlene. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Darlene to approve E1, E, and F. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And one I'm stating. So approve five to zero with one I'm stating. Next up then, we have new business, the handbooks.
That annual thing. Amazing.
Well, we do it every year.
Every year. At least, Joel.
And the next meeting, you get to tell us what you did.
So this is a first reading, which means there's no action. Honestly, you were pretty lucky this year, there weren't a ton of changes.
Yes.
I appreciate it. I appreciate that they highlighted the changes.
Yes, that makes nice scanning.
Yes.
So elementary, there really weren't a ton of changes. We have not had this issue yet here this year, but as part of our, of my involvement in a large cross-Indiana superintendent Zoom, it appears that AI eyewear is now an issue in schools.
Oh, wow.
Where things can just pop up on their lens.
When I first read that, I had to think, what we're talking about? I was thinking some kind of protection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's already ended up litigious, believe it or not.
Wow.
So it would be more of a cheating plagiarism kind of thing. So that's not, can't be allowable in the schools, in the classroom setting. It's going to kind of just fall under what our other cell devices and internet compatible device policies are. They did a little bit of revision for attendance situations and then all the handbooks kind of changed just to mirror each other, so they're formatted similarly, which was a nice addition. But not a ton of changes in the elementary one. Middle school, same, AI eyewear, not really a lot of changes except in formatting for the middle school. In the high school, again, the addition of AI eyewear. There was a small blurb about the Belmont Next Academy. We are still developing its own handbook because there are going to be some things, you know, when you're talking about virtual school defining even what present and absent and excused and unexcused is, takes a lot more verbiage than what's in there for brick and mortar kids. So a little bit of blurb in there about it, but a lot of it's going to be in the handbook you'll see next week.
So they will have their own handbook?
Some things are going to be, see the Belmont High School handbook as far as discipline, but a lot of the things about attendance and guidance is going to be different for They had to add, now I think we've got what, two or three cohorts worth of graduation requirements in this handbook because I think the freshmen are starting on the high school redesign and then there's a couple other things in there for a few more classes. So that's listed in there. They did choose to add and ask to add some provocation language in the code of conduct. We've had a couple incidents where students were dared, incited, challenged to do some things that were inappropriate, probably especially with students who may be a little more easily led or vulnerable, and so they wanted some language that would allow the student who was deliberately trying to incentivize or provoke someone to do something that they knew was wrong to also face some consequences. Some additional language, really just clarifying and adding and making it more explicit about driving and parking privileges. Students are very motivated by driving to school and so trying to use that a little more as an incentive for if you do some more of this, more severe consequences or repeated incidents, you might lose your driving privileges for a time. And I didn't catch this the first time around. I had just caught, most of us had just discussed that they had lengthened the number of the window of time administration had to talk to students who had five or more unexcused absences from five days to 10 days, which gives, again, a little more leeway because that can get really difficult, especially when you're talking about our 10-week rolling window that we're used to dealing with things in quarters and you kind of deal with it in that segment, and now it's just 10 weeks over, 10 weeks over, 10 weeks. Well, I did catch when I read through the legislation, again, they extended that to grade 12, so now we're doing that, wow, first to 12. So that'll be fun times for that one. And again, after the addition of volleyball, one of the things that Mr. Baker wanted added just to produce, just to clarify expectations and because questions have already arisen that if a student is participating in more than one sport concurrently, that they have to establish what their primary sport is so that there is going to be a clear pecking order of what practice or event takes precedent and what coach gets to make that choice whether to allow the student to go to the secondary sport or not. Otherwise, we have people stepping on each other's toes. So it's up to the student athlete to identify that, it's not up to us, but once they identify it, then if you have, your primary sport has a game or a practice and the coach doesn't want to let you out because it's greedy, turny, they don't have to. So that was one of the other requests there.
Is that not already in place? Because I grew up in Denver years.
Probably was never written in the handbook, would be my guess. But, and lots of times it, a few of the girls' sports were true concurrent, but a lot of times it was maybe a soccer player was a kicker for the football, so there wasn't as much need to track. And baseball sometimes would kind of have that issue, but I don't know. I think.
Just more overlapping sports.
More overlapping sports, yeah. So I would say, again, there's no action tonight on any of those. If you have questions, I'm more than happy to take them now, otherwise you can email or call me and I will talk with the administrators if there's anything you want more information about. Again, there wasn't a lot of changes, but.
I'll add my two cents. I've seen them all. They passed legal muster.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
No, it's just about policy. In the handbook.
Just reach out to me, I guess, if you have any further comment or questions.
So next we have the classified handbook, which is the first reading.
Yeah. So again, not a lot of changes in this. One, one big change, I guess, that I wanted to discuss, I'll talk with what the, I think that third bullet point was left over from a change made last year. So we did change a couple people in the matrix of what job falls into the classified handbook just because they were misidentified because of the length of their contract. Another minor thing was we had previously allowed six days of bereavement time for grandparents, step-grandparents, grandparents-in-law. After talking to the different directors, they felt that was too much for a grandparent. And again, we would always take into consideration if this grandparent was the person who actually was the primary caregiver of that person, that's a little bit different situation. But we wanted to change that to three days, bereavement leave, paid bereavement leave for grandparent relationships. Sick bank has been something that is a great thing for the people who really need it and we certainly want to keep it. However, we have had some incidents where it has started to become used more often and used for reasons that maybe we needed to go back and look at, is it really being used for things that are serious, ongoing illnesses and not stopgap between unpaid leave and using all the relief time. So one of the ways that we wanted to look at doing that was that after looking at a couple different school systems, classified handbooks, was look at the sick bank as they do where presently what we do, if you are granted sick bank leave, you're given that leave and you're given that leave. You get just more paid sick leave, and that's okay. But I think what other school systems have done to try to discourage it being overused is to make it a loan or a borrowing situation as opposed to a you get it and there's nothing that you have to give back. So I think what we have asked is that if someone needs any sick bank leave, up to 30 days of leave, they have to pay back two days of their contractual leave annually, once they are back on active duty, if that makes sense. So not while they're still on leave, not while they're still in the process of not being able to work, but once they come back full-time annually, they would have to give back two of the days. If they would leave employment at North Adams, if they would go to a different job, not, and we'll go over these other exceptions, basically then they would have to pay us the monetary per diem rate that they were paid at the time of their separation from us. What does not get included there, if there is a death, if someone goes on permanent disability, and I think there was a third item, I don't have it looked right now, there was a third reason that basically would make them unable to work, then there is no repayment, basically they would flush, is how I would describe it. I don't know if Scott has any.
I haven't read through this one yet. I don't know if I didn't get it or haven't got it, so.
It was in attached, but I'll have to, I'll have to talk some more.
I'll look for it again. I don't want to.
Can you? No, I was just going to ask if you could, because it's different than what I'm used to. How does it work? Like if I, if I get sick, I would call in for a few days, but if I'm off for long term, how does that work and where does sick bank come into?
Okay, so this gets confusing and I'm probably going to have to because I'm used to the teacher contract and the classified contract. So everyone gets paid leave in schools, classified staff, and this is what, who we're talking about, and it's seven days annually. And I think for classified staff, it can accrue to 90 days. Is that correct? I think for classified, 90 days.
Ninety-seven. Well, it's called 90, but in the 90 accrued and then the next July 1.
In the seven annual.
You can start with 97.
Okay.
You wouldn't have any more added.
Accrued until. So you could have maximum 97 days and then given you as a classified employee if you.
Illness.
Illness.
Okay.
And you also get three personal days a year that can roll over. Two of them can roll over to your sick days annually. It's a little bit different than teachers, the numbers are. So you have to use that accrued leave or accumulated leave first.
First.
When you're, when you're sick. The sick bank would only come into play after you have used all of your accumulated leave. So some people use their annual leave annually, and so they don't have a lot accumulated. So they might reach that point sooner than someone who rarely takes off and has some So they might reach that point sooner than someone who rarely takes off and has some catastrophic illness, injury, whatever. And in our particular sick bank, you can only use it for the employees, illness or injury. You cannot use it for family. Now you can use your sick days for family medical leave, but you can't ask for sick bank for anyone but yourself. So that's what triggers what's when someone may ask for sick bank too.
Okay.
Again, what we have found with classified staff, as you can see, we have a lot of turnover in that, in that staff. So there's often not a lot of accumulated leave for very many. So sick bank is getting triggered more and more often. And sometimes it's not necessarily falling under what I would have called a long-term illness or injury. It's more of a, I may have had the flu, a couple of doctor's appointments here and there. And basically I use my seven days and now I'm out of days. And maybe I need to have a procedure or maybe I got the flu again and I'm off for four or five and I want to, I don't want to take unpaid leave, which I get, but that wasn't the purpose of sick bank. And so I think the other thing we put in there is you need to either be asking for more than five days for sick bank as long, and what I mean is you needed to have been off, you need to be off for more than five days. And that could include you've used your accumulated leave and then you, that's fine if you need just a couple of days of sick bank. But if you only need five days or less, sick bank's not a stopgap for unpaid leave is kind of what we're going for.
And maybe it does still exist. There was a time when there would have been a committee representation that they actually do determine whether it's worthy of a sick bank. Is that still?
That's still the case. I can tell you, it has become more difficult, number one, with precedent. And number two, with the legal interpretation, and maybe Scott can pipe in here, what is considered a disability has gotten much broader.
So it's much harder to make that.
Yes.
Without being accused of discrediting.
And so again, this is, you can have it and that's no problem. But it's with the idea that this was a once, hopefully a one-time situation.
But the intent was, as you're describing, for really extreme type illness.
And we've had those too. And those are, that's what we want it for. We don't want it to go away because we've had some really good employees who have just had a terrible medical situation happen and they needed supported through that. And we loved them when they came back, loved when they came back. And we're glad to be able to do it for them. It's a great perk that not very many businesses have. So I'm glad we have it. But it can become a very expensive.
Sure.
Perk too, if misused.
You mentioned that, you know, they return and then the payback. What if also they would retire? Would that?
That's the per diem rate.
Would that would be a per diem rate? Kind of struggle a little bit with that one. I definitely understand the.
I think that was the third item, the retirement, retiring because of disability or inability to do the job anymore because of the medical situation, it would be discounted. But I will also say, it's happened that people wait and have procedures and things done right before they retire.
And use the system.
Which again, I don't, I get it. It's not that I get it, but not that I don't get it, but something to consider. Again, this is a first reading, so think about it. Let me know what you think. We'll vote on it or not. Next one.
Thank you for explaining that. We move on to transportation handbook.
Really not much in there at all. I did take the duly employed language that was also in the classified handbook and put it in the transportation handbook because so many of the folks that are duly employed are bus drivers. So I wanted that language just referenced in both locations. And that's really all the changes we made. We did not change any best discipline because we really had virtually zero issues this year. And nothing else has really changed in, in that realm at this time.
And next we have a personnel item, an assignment.
So I referenced one of our previous policies that had changed in legislation a couple of years ago where we have to put some approvals for personnel in new business if they need certain criteria. So we had an individual that's being recommended to be a coach or an assistant coach with one of our fall sports. And so that's why this approval is separate and in the new business. So this just needs to be a separate vote because you as a board have to be able to, we have to be able to show that we looked at that situation and that personnel hire individually and that you received whatever information you needed to receive.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve the personnel assignment? Make the motion to approve the assignment as presented. Motion by Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wiley. Motion by Michelle, second by Wiley, to approve the personnel assignment as presented. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero. Six to zero. Next up is the approval of the resolution to move education funds to operation funds on a monthly basis.
So again, for new board members, I tried to explain when the state several years go from general fund to separating education and operations, they allowed us to transfer up to 15% of our ed fund revenue to operations annually to help pay for some of those salaries and benefits that had originally been paid for out of gen, general fund, which is now more or less education fund. We have kept a fairly conservative transfer and have been throttling it back for the last four years. So right now we have been at like 7.9%, somewhere between seven and eight percent for the last several years. As I talk to you, I'm going to be talking to you more with this new legislative session. Budgets are going to get really, really tight. And ed fund budget for us right now is my main concern. And so in trying to keep as much revenue as I can in ed fund and working with Chad Locklock, we are going to throttle that back to around a 2% transfer and see how that goes. If it doesn't go well, you'll see this resolution back for review again. But I think we will be okay. Our operations fund, while again, property taxes are going to take a hit and therefore our operations fund will take a hit. We are, because of our bonding strategies are a lot more agile right now in that particular fund. So that's going to come to about a $21,000 transfer a month for 2%. So we're going to do that just to again, try to get ready for the fall and what we might need to do just to keep that fund as healthy as we can.
When we do transfers like this, does it affect how future finance availability or approval is when it comes back to the school system? Like when the state looks at it, it's like you've utilized this much. And, and while we're presenting it obviously as a need, that's why we need to transfer it. But are, is there a potential that they're going to look at it and say, well, if you've had that much to transfer on a monthly basis, then why are you considering yourself to be like, if that makes sense? Yeah, I mean, as we say, it changes.
I think the significant thing is that it's, it's much lower than the 15% with being 2%. Because they do right now allow up to 15%. So they're recognizing the need to make that transfer. But I think we're showing really due diligence by it being 2%. Could do the 15%.
Right, right. I can tell you, there's more districts talking about doing the opposite right now, that they have had a really low transfer and they're upping it because their operations fund is getting hit harder. So we're kind of doing the opposite because our education fund is tighter. And we've got a lot more wiggle room in operations, so.
But as Kim said, who knows? Depends on the weather, how they want to interpret it the next legislative session.
We're beginning to wonder, after I've gone to several workshops and things in the last few months, that things are. Well, I'll just have to make this statement, maybe Wiley was going to do this. I did go to a workshop with Policy Analytics who goes through all the legislation and especially does a lot with the legal part, but also the economic part. And with the property tax reform in particular, it was it's just, I'm hoping that there's opportunity for legislators to revisit this, even the short session upcoming. Because when you look at, they could, they did not have the time because of how quickly they put that legislation through to really run the numbers as much as they needed to. The amount of impact that's happening to local government entities like schools versus what the taxpayer is going to feel relief from. All this for a tech, for a homeowner to have a $350 reduction on their taxes.
Around $300 reduction.
And that's really only for one to two years. And then it starts recovering because the US constitution determines the gross assessed value. The net assessed value is more contingent upon state law, but the gross assessed value is going to keep growing. And so that $350 is going to get eaten up as that goes up. So it's really a lot of impact for not a lot of gain. So I don't know. I'm hoping they see these numbers and decide, okay, this didn't come out the way we wanted it to. I'm hoping they don't say, we need to give more relief to the taxpayer at the expense of local government. I'm afraid, afraid. I'm very afraid of that, but. So it was eye-opening, I guess, to see all that we're having to go through to look at our budgets and do differently and be concerned and then know, well, no one's really making a lot of gains from this. So anyway, that was mine. I don't think we voted for it.
You were just fine. Any other questions or comments or a motion to approve the resolution to move funds, ask Kim over there?
Make the motion.
Motion by Dave, is there a second? Second by Darlene. Motion by Dave, second by Darlene, to approve the resolution to move education funds to operation funds on a monthly basis. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero. Next up is the approval of the district property insurance for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So I think you have one of these sheets at your table. I think they gave us a revised one here in just the last day that came in a little bit better. One of the things that I can tell you, all the districts as we were lobbying this legislative session talked about were just the increase in expenses. And one of the big increases in expenses we've been seeing is property liability insurance. As you can see, over just that three-year span, huge jumps every year. And a lot of that, we're told, are because of inflation to fix anything, replace anything, maintain anything, and just the large increase in the number of high wind events with property damage that are being seen so much more here in the Midwest. We don't really have a choice in it. We have, we have to carry it. I can say we don't at North Adams have a lot of folks who are willing to bid us this because of having a rifle room. It's just what it is. It just to them is a, even though their airsoft rifles, to them it's an increased liability. But I think they did give us a little bit of an improvement. So we're looking at about $26,000 increase on our premiums, annual premiums for just the property liability. Little bit of a decrease from last year on workman's comp, so that's great, about $10,000. And then cybersecurity, staying stagnant. Big increase from 23 to 24, but because we've been seeing a lot more cyber attacks. And after Power School was hit and some of those kinds of things and different schools have been hit with their payroll and things like that, it's really nothing that is all, it's something we have to have to because of the likelihood of something happening. So it looks like the question, the request is going to be renewal for CM Regent for our property liability, IP EP for workman's comp and Travelers Insurance for cybersecurity.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve? Motion by Joel, is there a second? Second by Darlene. Motion by Joel, second and by Darlene, to approve the district property insurance for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, same sign. Approved, six to zero. Next up is the approval of the district public official bonds.
So again, for new board members, this is something we do every year around this board meeting for these four positions. Food service always is in a different six-month category. I think in December is when we do the food service bonds. But basically what this is, it's a guarantee that the folks who handle money in this district, larger amounts of money are going to be protected and that our public and district will be protected from potential fraud. To cover situations where a public official might misappropriate or abuse their position. Fraud, in other words, or embezzlement or whatever the case may be, theft. So our request is to bond Bev Quinn as our district treasurer, up to $100,000. Bev Lichtensteiger, up to $100,000 as ECA treasurer for the district. Lori Ballmer at $50,000 as deputy treasurer and Billie Nguyen at $450,000 as payroll and benefits coordinator.
Any questions or comments on that or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion approved.
Okay, motion by Wiley, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, was that Dave or Joel?
That was me.
Okay. Motion by Wiley, second and by Joel, to approve the district public official bonds as noted. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero. Next we have the approval of the resolution to allow North Adams Food Service to self-certify micro purchases up to $50,000.
So again, I think our original policy had allowed, was it 10,000 Bev, I think originally.
This is for food service. They just have to do this every year. That was the, you're thinking of our classes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So this is another one of those annual things, I guess, but they have to just show that you approved every year. So food service often has to purchase big, big amounts of food that can be 50,000 or plus, whether. And so not having to go out and get bids every time you want to place a big food order or supply order is very helpful for them because they are part of a lot of buying cooperatives which you approved, I think, last meeting too. So this just lets them up to $50,000 be able to go out and say, this is who I want to go with. This is the most, best balance of quality and efficiency and price without having to get three bids and go through that entire process.
Any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion approved.
Thanks. A motion by Dave, second and by Joel, to approve the resolution to allow North Adams Food Service to self-certify micro purchases up to $50,000. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved, six to zero. Next we have board member and or public comments.
Just for information for our Indiana school.
Just for information, for our Indiana School Board Association, I am a member of the nominating committee of representing our district here. In fact, I just got the email yesterday.
Nice.
Just for information.
Okay. Congratulations. Anything else?
For my report, just to update on the construction. If you walk through the middle school elementary RAS hallway, it is demolished. Lots of block coming out of the building, no ceilings, no floor, down to dirt and several clasterings. But they did it fast and they're moving right along. We are on track for the the things in A Hall, like the sped wing and the oxygen where they're replacing pipe and things. And Mr. Wurling's area in the high school to be done by the end of June. We are still crossing our fingers on that RAS hallway. It will all be about the cabinetry and whether it gets fabricated and being able to be installed in time. But right now they are on track to meet their deadline of a few days before school starts. So we have lots of buffer. Principals are making Plan Bs just in case. But again, I can't say enough about, we've worked with lots of different contractors. But Mullen Camp, this is our second time working with them and they have just been really easy to work with and very responsive. So very impressed and glad that they're on our team. The milling across campus in the different parking lots is going to start, start here any day. We all started parking over there. I think we were supposed to get started, haven't quite got there yet, but it will within a few days here. So that'll cause some probably disruption to parking and traffic flow a little bit at times. But luckily that big pothole out in the middle of North Adams Drive is getting.
That's what you're dressed in.
Well, that's just one of the roads is getting fixed and I keep saying, yep, as soon as I get here, that's what they're going to do. Okay, that's why the cone's in it, just so nobody loses a wheel.
Let me see speed bump.
It's something. Summer Best started on June second and we're in our second week and it's going really well. We have a big enrollment of kids in summer school. I guess I should say summer learning. Summer Best, we still have rooms, so if anyone needs daycare in the summer, we have still lots of openings. Registration is set to be kicked off. Tiffany, is it July eleventh we're wanting to go live with?
We're going to see just before mid-July.
Just before mid-July. Okay, we're still trying to work on some things. But Belmont Next interest survey went out. And we have had, I haven't checked today, I think we're up to close to thirteen to fourteen. People show interest in it. And again, I was happy if we get ten takers, so that's kind of right now on the trajectory. I was hoping for this first foray, so we'll see how that continues to go. Spring Athletics, again, want to say congratulations to our girls tennis team who did phenomenally this year. And also our boys' baseball team really showed a lot of grit and determination and had some good games there at the end of the season that were fun to watch. Middle School Track sent several kids to state and they did, fared very well. And all of our spring athletics had a great time and a great showing. I'll have a lot more next month about, I can't believe we already talked about start of school. The months are just flying by and the weeks are just flying by. I'm probably forgetting something. Oh, commencement, commencement went really well and congratulations to all of our graduates. They had a really nice program, I thought, with lots of kids getting able to, being able to participate. And I love that we have different kids coming up and introducing different speakers or... Just gives, again, allows us to see a cross-section of the class, which I think is really, really cool. So congratulations to the high school on putting together that and all the graduates. I think that's all I have right now, unless somebody can think of something else.
Kim, is it too early to know how the cuts for preschool are going to be from the state vouchers?
Not good.
I know. But can we tell exactly what it's going to look like or is it just too early?
I think the cut in the amount, so again, for a full-time, on my way pre-K voucher student. All right, Lori, I probably meant to defer to you, it's over three hundred dollars, wasn't it?
And you'll become one forty-seven ninety-two, I believe. Oh, wow. And seventy-three.
For that part.
And some change for the twenty-five dollars.
And the bigger concern is even if you have someone who needs that, the state has very much capped how many they're giving out. And the line and way to get on a voucher is now, it's going to be really hard to get a new voucher. If you have one and needs renewed, that one is more likely to happen. But trying to get a new voucher is going to be difficult. So we are going to change the poverty line as well, the index to the poverty line. So you have to make much less to even qualify.
That's unfortunate. And now one other requirement that we have added is that people who apply must be working, not just applying for jobs.
They must be employed.
They must be employed.
Was that sad when you're talking about trying to get kids school-ready?
Yeah.
I guess I understand part of their purpose, but again, those children still need quality pre-K.
If there is, both parents, do both parents have to be employed?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We have more information coming in, more zooms to watch, more.
Good thing we raised the poverty line, was still like, if you're working, you meet that anyway.
Right.
I think it was a hundred and forty thousand now is the poverty line. So it's like, say again? Hundred and forty percent of the poverty.
Hundred and forty thousand, I missed.
Sorry. Hundred and forty percent of what they consider poverty index and it varies by how many people are in your house.
But it's so pretty rough.
Yeah, considering it was one hundred. But we're going to see that everywhere because they also did this with SNAP and TANF, which is part of what calculates our complexity index for ADM monies. And there's going to be fewer people eligible for those as well. So that means fewer free reduced, less complexity money. Pardon?
Title one funds.
Title one funds.
Yes.
And universal fees on the... So I guess my statement, my repetitious statement has been, we all have experienced cuts in different years in this business. It's the layers of cuts that are happening and it's very difficult to even know what are in some of the layers until some of this legislation has gotten tweaked out. And you have them happening at the federal level and the state level simultaneously. And we still don't know exactly what's happening with all the title monies, whether it's title one, title two. They did away with title three and, well, it got consumed and title two and four are merging, I think. And title three kind of sort of is gone. So that won't impact us so much, the title three part, but for those schools who have a large EL population, it will be devastating for them. It's going to be interesting times.
Thank you.
You're just going to have to be a lot more business oriented.
On a side note, I did talk with Jeremy Gilbert and he said the roundabout is a little bit ahead of time. So whether that could stay that way or not.
Give it some time.
I know. It's only been a five-year delay, so.
So far, so good. I really pray it's not going on too long into when school starts. To have to reroute, all that traffic will be difficult along First Street. And I don't know if I've announced this, but they are going to redo the signalization here at the light to try to make it where there's not as many opportunities for close calls of turning traffic and through traffic. So that should be happening this summer, hoping in July so that people can get practiced up a little bit before school starts.
So you're talking like more of a delay before one, when it changes from red to yellow?
He said they're putting speed bumps or two on it.
They're supposed to, the city got a grant to put raised, they called them raised car slots, but basically that's the way it gets to speed up.
It would probably be equivalent to what's on First.
It's going to stay down that way.
So along Og Street, Monroe Extended, and then I think Pickwa, potentially where we've had the flashing lights. So that, I think that's a positive, it just gives people a reminder, so they're... That's all I have right now.
Anything else? We will turn to you. Thank you.